Today's work session, we really have four things we want folks to focus on. The first is that, as you all know, staff is continuing to work to link the ongoing community engagement effort with the internal budget work that we're doing. And you're going to hear from a few moments, in a few moments, from Taylor Floyd, our budget manager, about some of the specific work we've done with the community engagement in the last few weeks and some of the work that's scheduled to come up later this month. We're also going to spend some time, as Deborah said, talking about the general fund, and really going to be focused in on next year. We talked a little bit with you all at the first budget work session about how things were going this year in the general fund. So we're going to start to look ahead to next year and what the revenue growth might be like. And one of the takeaways is going to be that even though we are going to have some revenue growth, in fact, more revenue growth than we probably would have anticipated six months ago or nine months ago, given the COVID pandemic, a lot of that revenue growth is going to be eaten up by increased costs just to continue providing the existing level of service that we're providing right now. And then the third part of the presentation, as Deborah mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, as the acronym is. We are still reviewing guidance and waiting on further guidance from the Treasury, US Treasury, on that program. But we're beginning to get more information from other folks out in the community, from general, from our GFOA, from the local government, the school of government at Chapel Hill. And we're always, and we're also beginning to plan and think about the potential to add additional staff to support that program. And then finally, we're going to talk about our capital improvement program. And the message on the capital improvement program is going to be much as it was last year at this time when we talked to you all, that we do have a significant amount of capital needs, and they do outstrip our available resources that we have to address those right now. Next slide, please. So to start with, again, as we have in the past couple of budget work sessions, we're going to kind of talk about where we are with the process and where we're headed over the next few weeks. So on the next slide, as always, we have this graphical representation of kind of where we're at. As you all know, as we've talked about in the first two work sessions, the internal work on the budget really started a number of months ago, in fact, back in November. So we're internally, at least, we're well into the budget process at this point. This is the third budget work session that we've had with you all. And then we have some important key dates coming up as well in the next four to six weeks, which you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Beth. So some of those important key dates and some changes we've had since we last talked to you all. We have added a meeting of the Finance and Human Resources Committee that's scheduled for a week from today. And the committee will discuss proposed fee changes for next fiscal year. As you all may recall, at the last work session, we talked to you all about some of our fees and in the general fund, some of the services that fees cover. And in particular, we talked about the Water Resources Fund and the need to make some rate realignment and rate adjustments in that fund. And so the committee will review those recommendations at their meeting next week. And then that would be followed up by bringing those recommendations to City Council for their consideration on May the 11th. We have also added an additional council budget work session scheduled for two weeks from today on April 27th. That'll be our final budget work session with you all before we bring you the manager's recommended budget at the end of May. And then, as I mentioned, in May, the next date after that, after the fee adjustments, would be presentation of the manager's budget on May 25th. So just a quick reminder, we did have a work session on March 2030, it was our second work session. Some of the key things we talked about at that work session, we focused on the enterprise funds and looked specifically at the impact that the pandemic has had on the revenue side in some of the enterprise funds, in particular, the civic center, parking and transit, and how the ongoing pandemic is still impacting the revenue in some of those funds. We talked about fees in general, as I mentioned, we talked about the fact that as we are reviewing fees this year and thinking about potential fee changes, we're really focused in on how it's impacting our customers and the cost of providing services. And then we spent a great deal of time talking about the water fee, and we heard from our consultants at D E C about our water program and the need to adjust water fees to maintain the financial health of that fund as we move forward. And then we began talking a little bit about, and again, we're going to have more information today, about the American Rescue Plan and the information that we're receiving about not only the amount of money that we're getting, but what that money can be used for. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor Floyd, our budget manager, and he's going to talk to you all a little bit about the community engagement that we've been doing.
Thanks, Tony. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Quick update on the external engagement. We held, in March, we held three consultant-led virtual sessions, and we had a survey available on the city's website. Those were, I think, pretty successful, the survey. I believe we actually closed today. And just a few notes on what we've heard so far from those and kind of looking forward to the next piece of the engagement. One is, you know, I want to make sure to know that we're continuing our conversation from reimagining public safety work that started in the fall. And specifically, we've asked some questions, trying to get a better sense of what the expectations are around some of the services we transitioned out of A P D, like noise ordinance enforcement and animal services. We're also asked for some specific feedback around how to improve some of our services in three areas, just looking at how we can better provide access to information, staff, and to the services we provide. These areas also align with some of the work that we've been doing internally with staff as part of our internal budget process. Next slide. So as I said, the online survey closed today, so we are still reviewing information. We wanted to give you a little bit of early feedback on what we've heard. One of those things was an interest in better understanding how the budget impacts day-to-day life. And, you know, it's a little bit of a challenge sometime with the breadth and the complexity of the budget to make that connection, but that's something that we heard. We also heard some interest in improving access to city staff and asked some questions about what that might look like and whether that meant in person or virtual or something else. And then lastly, some interest in building capacity at the neighborhood level, and that maybe that could be achieved through some financial support for smaller-scale projects in neighborhoods. So again, early, early feedback, we still have a lot of work to do to kind of process this, but just wanted to share that with you all. Next slide. And then looking ahead, later this month, we have three more virtual work sessions on April 20th, 22nd, and 23rd. And our plan for those is to provide an update on some of the work that we've been doing internally. We also want to make sure that we're sharing the priorities that you all identified in your, at your retreat, and then continue that conversation around how to improve access to our services, especially in places where we've perhaps come up a little bit short in the past there. Are there any questions about that? I think I'm going to turn it back over to Tony.
All right. Thanks, Taylor. So before we kind of dive into talking about some of the numbers in the general fund, does anyone have any questions on the process or the community engagement effort or any of the feedback we've received so far? Okay, seeing none, we'll roll on to the next section of the presentation. So the next few slides, we're going to be talking about the general fund budget, and we're going to be talking about what we call the baseline budget. And essentially, this is the revenues that we currently have without any fee increases or tax rate increases or anything like that. So it's what we would call natural, what we expect, you know, in terms of natural revenue growth for next year. And on the expense side, it's the expenditures that we would need in the general fund to continue current operations without any significant changes to service delivered. So Beth, you can move on to the next slide. So on the general fund revenue side, and I think we've had this donut chart in our previous two presentations as well, so we just want to remind folks kind of to start with, before we get into some of the numbers, that the overall size of the general fund budget is about $135 million. And that property taxes and sales taxes by far and away make up the biggest chunk of our revenues in the general fund. Together, those two revenue sources make up about 75% of our overall general fund revenue source. So we really want to focus on those two revenues as we go through the next few slides and kind of begin to give you all a forecast, if you will, for next year in terms of where we're headed on the revenue side. So in terms of property taxes and just kind of, again, baseline general fund growth with property taxes, you all may remember from the first work session, we talked about how tax-based growth in the current year has exceeded estimates, and so we're doing better than we had anticipated on the property tax side in this current year. When we look back over the last three years and look at the average growth in our tax base, we're seeing that growth is about 2.6%. And so we're assuming that we're going to see that kind of growth in next year's tax base as well. And we're also, at this point, assuming that City Council will adopt a revenue-neutral property tax rate. As you all know, we talked a little bit about that at the first work session, and we'll be actually presenting that revenue-neutral tax rate in May when we present the city manager's proposed budget. So given those assumptions, right now, we're looking at an estimated growth in our property tax revenue of about $3.2 million. Next slide. So on the sales tax side of our budget, again, as we talked about a few weeks ago, we're doing much better on, in terms of sales taxes this year than we had anticipated. We've now got seven months of sales tax revenue so far this fiscal year, and our revenues are up about 8.4% compared to where it was last year. And that's much better than we had anticipated. We had thought, given the pandemic and the economic conditions, that we would actually have, be seeing a sales tax revenue decline this fiscal year. So the fact that it's up by 8.4% is very surprising and very positive. We've assumed that moving forward for the rest of this fiscal year and for next fiscal year, we would see continued growth in sales taxes, a little bit less than what we have seen so far this fiscal year, but we are still assuming 5% growth for the next 12 to 18 months on sales taxes. And so given that assumption, that will bring, that will bring in about $4.8 million in additional sales tax revenue for next year's budget. So, next slide, Beth. So to kind of bring that all together, so again, on the, on the property tax side, we're assuming a revenue-neutral tax rate would be adopted by City Council. We're looking at sales tax growth of about 5%. We're, when we look at our other general fund revenues, at this point, we're projecting those to continue on at kind of the levels they've been the last few years. We're also, at this point, assuming that there would be no fund balance appropriation in the general fund. When you kind of bring that all together, and we'll show you some numbers on the next slide, we're looking at general fund revenue growth next year of about 5.6 million or 4.2%. And I'll say once again, you know, that's, had you all asked us, I think, six months, nine months, certainly 12 months ago, we would have been anticipating that kind of growth in the general fund, given where we're at with the pandemic. I don't, I don't think anybody would have forecasted that. So we're very pleased that we've had better-than-expected growth, and then hopefully we'll see that continue. But Beth, if you want to go to the next slide, this is kind of a graphical representation, you know, it wouldn't be a budget presentation if we didn't have at least one slide that's, that's filled with numbers. And I know there are a lot of numbers on this page, but essentially, again, the bottom line is that when you look at this year's budget in the general fund on the revenue side and compare it to where we think we're going to end up next year, we're looking at growth of about $5.6 million. Next slide. Thanks, Beth. So on the expenditure side of the budget, again, just to kind of remind folks, the breakdown of how our money's spent in the general fund, it's a $134 million budget, and about 80 million of that is personnel costs. And as you all know, we're a service-driven organization, and as such, it's not unusual, in fact, it's, it's common that in most organizations, the bulk of their general fund expenses are in personnel costs. So just kind of moving ahead to where we think we may see some changes next year, we'll actually start before we kind of get into some of the things we think are going to be, some increases we may see. There are some, some kind of key general fund expenses that we think are going to, that we're going to be able to maintain at the current year level and not increase. And here's a list of a few of those. We have to contribute to our other post-employment benefits program through the state of North Carolina. We think we can keep that contribution flat. We're also looking at keeping our contribution to the capital, capital improvement program in the general fund flat next year. Thanks to continued positive trends in our healthcare and healthcare claims data, we believe we can keep the employer contribution to the healthcare fund flat next year. And even though there, there's some increases, and we'll show you some of the inflationary increases in departmental budgets over the next few slides, we think that overall departmental operating budgets for things like materials, supplies, training, those kinds of things can be kept at the level that they're at this year. So as I mentioned, we are looking at some cost increases next year to the budget. The first of those, and this slide shows some of the things we're looking at on the personnel side of the budget. And in particular, I'd like to highlight those first two items on this list. As you all may remember, to help balance this year's budget, we froze a certain number of positions in the general fund for six months of this fiscal year. We are assuming that with next year's budget, we would fully fund those positions, and so that alone will add about $1.1 million back to the budget. In addition, the state of North Carolina, over the last several years, has required local governments to step up their contribution to the state retirement plan. And that step-up contribution increase is going to continue again next year, which will lead to an additional expense of about $700,000 in the general fund. Some of the other items on this page, just to run through those quickly, we are planning to complete and open a new fire station in 2022. And as a result of that, we will need to go ahead and hire additional staff partway through next fiscal year to begin to be ready to operate that station. And so we have money that will build into the budget for that. We also received a couple of years ago, a grant to add some additional firefighters. And over time, the grant amount goes down, and the city's contribution in support of those firefighters' costs goes up. And so we're seeing an additional, we're seeing that continue next year, which will add some additional cost to the budget. And then we also had some staffing that we added this fiscal year for the recently completed Rad TIP project to maintain that infrastructure. And we budgeted it just for six months this fiscal year, given the timeline for that project, and we'll have to pick up a full year's cost for that next fiscal year. Next slide. A few things on the operating side we would want to highlight. We are anticipating just a general increase in the transit contract next year. This is not related to any kind of service increase or anything like that, it's just to provide the current service level. We're also planning on budgeting more in the Public Works Department for storm response. And that really relates to two different things. Really, it's kind of winter storms and the salt and sand that Public Works needs to maintain the streets during the winter. But really, where we're seeing the need for additional funding is in, for spring storms, for heavy rain that lead to landslides and things like that. And so we're trying to be proactive and add additional money into the Public Works budget next year so that they have dollars to address those needs. We're also anticipating a cost increase for our recycling contract. We don't have an exact dollar number on that as of yet, but it is a fairly significant cost to that contract, or cost increase to that contract. We also have some additional cost increases related to our security guards here at City Hall and to our new public safety time. And then finally, on the next slide, just a few more things to kind of finish off this part of the discussion. We expanded our homeless outreach in the current year. It was a program that was funded for about six months, and so to continue that program and fully fund it next year, would require an additional $60,000. We're also planning on putting more money into the business inclusion training program next year, and, and we're also seeing some cost increases in our body-worn camera maintenance as well. So again, a number of things that we're looking at as cost increases on the expense side in the general fund. And so where that kind of leaves us, and we haven't tallied this all out yet because these aren't all of them, these are just some examples, and we're also still working to finalize numbers in a number of places. But we do believe, and Beth, you can go on to the next slide, that we anticipate most of that $5.6 million in revenue growth that I talked about will be eaten up by these ongoing operating cost increases that we've talked about over the last few slides. So where does that leave us? So I think one thing we wanted to talk about, and as we finish out this section, is again, a kind of reminder, as you all finished up your retreat last week and talked about your priorities for the upcoming year, we want to remind folks of the strategies and priorities that you all identified over the last few years, and the fact that we have, that there has been funding put into the budget over the last few years to, to address some of these strategies. And so within that baseline budget that I talked about, there's already dollars, some dollars being expended to help meet these strategies and goals of City Council. And then, of course, the funding priorities that you all highlighted at your retreat a few weeks ago, there were four of those. It was funding around reparations, reimagining public safety, the compensation plan, and the utilization of the American Rescue funding. And so what we were planning on doing is, at that final budget work session on April 27th, we'll bring you all more information and some more specific funding proposals that relate back to these strategies and priorities that you all identified a few weeks ago. So with that, I'll pause and see if you all have any more questions before I turn it over to Taylor for the next section of the presentation.
Tony, is the next part of the presentation going to get into those new items?
No, the next part of the presentation is going to get into the Rescue Plan and what we know so far. We really are, we're still working kind of to identify what those proposals would be for funding, and then we'll have more information on those in your next work session.
You're talking about the priorities that came out of the retreat?
Correct.
Tony, you have a question from Gwen and from Kim?
Tony, I would like a list of all the open positions. And remind me how recycling is being funded, or, you know, all waste management is being funded. I know some of it's general fund and some of it's fees. You have a, you may not be able to answer this right now, but I would like, you know, to look at that. And then you mentioned the reduced grant funding for the fire department. Can you remind me what those programs are and provide some analysis as to whether we should continue those programs or what kind of obligations we have relative to previously-funded, previously, programs that have been previously funded by grants? And kind of give me a sense of, you know, where we, where we stand. I know that usually they sort of phase out, so, you know, are we looking at more increases next year? So those are just some things. And again, you don't have to answer them today, but I would like an answer.
Great. And I think to give you specifics on those, I will follow up on those. I mean, I could talk a little bit about some of them right now, but I think, just to give you more detail, and we'll send you a follow-up after this.
Question. There's a lot of information online about funding that comes from the Justice Bureau as it pertains to body-worn camera implementation. I'm wondering if there is additional funds for body-worn camera maintenance?
We can, we can also look into that and follow up as well.
And I think, Ms. Roney, you have a question.
Yeah, some of those were questions that I shared with Gwen and Shanika. Can we go back to slide 20? Okay. So we're talking about 2022 new fire station staffing. Is this number based on what we are currently paying our staff or projections based on potential for the numbers in our comp study?
I'm thinking, I don't know if Taylor has those numbers to confirm. We're going to have to follow up and give you the answer on that. I would guess that, given that the compensation study has not been fully adopted yet, that the numbers are probably based off of current salary levels. And it is really, it's just a partial year at this point, it's not a full year of operation for those, for those firefighters. But we can check and let you know on that as well.
Yeah, Tony, I think that's exactly right. It is based on our current compensation, and that number represents the hiring staff, not a full-year cost, but what it would cost for additional recruits in the training academy for a certain period of the year. So that's not, that is not what it's going to cost to operate that station from a staffing perspective, you know, on an annual basis. It will be higher than that.
So I get the partial year fund, it would help me to understand if we're looking at the comp study, what that full number would be, maybe, whether it's a scale or something like that, from where we are now to where we might be. And then the other question I had was, I know we have a new contract for our body-worn cameras, and I remember the first two years being significantly lower than the next few. And so I was curious if what maintenance was included in that? So if we're also looking at new cameras and a new contract that will also require additional maintenance? And I don't have those numbers off the top of my head right now, so obviously, I would expect that that might take some time.
We can definitely get that for you.
And also, Taylor or Tony, can you all tell us when the new fire station will actually open? What we're doing is, for the most part, some training. Can, can you address the new fire station staffing in a little bit more detail, if possible?
Sure. And Taylor, you might have to remind me what the projected opening date for the station is right now. I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to give a month, but it is not in the next fiscal year. It will be very early in fiscal year 2023 is the projected start date right now.
Yeah. And I think, as you all know, the August of 20, well, August of 2022, I think, is what Chief Burnett has, has just texted me. So, but in order for them to be staffed and ready to open, their recruits go through about six months of training, and so they have to hire them well before the station opens in order to get them through the academy and get them out on the trucks in order to be ready. And so that's, that's what the cost is next year is to hire additional staff when they do hiring in the fall and have those folks ready when the station does open.
And then I had one more question while we're on this slide. In 2017, we added additional positions to the Asheville Police Department, and we have a significant number of openings right now. So I know that pay rates and, you know, benefits would have changed. It would help. It would help, in my understanding, when we're talking about investing in long term safety strategies, what that additional number would cost now? It stays dollars. And that's all I have for today.
This is Sage. On that slide, just to follow up on Kim's question, that $1.15 million, that includes the APD? Because I just took it as the frozen. I thought we were, police weren't frozen.
They were not. Yeah, none of that's public safety staff.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, public safety was exempt. We didn't freeze any of those positions.
Any additional questions? All right, well, thank you all. We'll move on to the to the next part of the presentation.
All right. So I think we showed you this slide at the last worst section and just wanted to kind of give you a refresher on what information we we do currently have about the American Rescue Plan, which is not a lot. You know, we are still awaiting guidance from the Department of Treasury. We know the direct allocation is about $26 million. We also do know that we're likely to get some additional resources through housing and urban development and also to support transit. But the the $26 million is going to be provided in two payments. One, 60 days from when the law was signed, which is should be pretty soon. And then the second half, one year later, and the current deadline to spend all of those resources is the end of the year 2024. So next slide. This is some other information direct from from the bill. These are the the qualified uses that have been identified. The first one is probably the the broadest responding to the emergency and addressing its economic effects. A few specifics are listed there. No, this list is not intended to be exhaustive, but just examples of groups and industries that could be helped. The second one, providing premium pay to essential employees or grants to their employers. Providing governments services affected by revenue reduction. So essentially that's replacing lost revenue, which I think, as we mentioned earlier, in an earlier work session, probably will be impactful, especially in some of our enterprise funds. And then lastly, making investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Next slide. So since there's not a lot of guidance or any guidance from Treasury, we've been trying to do some research to see what other organizations are recommending. And one of those is the Government Finance Officers Association. The GFOA provides best practices for financial management in public agencies. And as you would expect from a group with that focus, their recommendations were really around how the funding should be managed. So going through these really quickly, you know, they suggested prioritizing nonrecurring expenses. You know, this is temporary funding, so looking at one time expenditures, you know, which potentially means it can be a good option for infrastructure capital expenses. Spreading over the qualifying period, that's really about just making sure that, you know, it's a little bit easier to manage. We're not spending it in big chunks, but kind of trying to stretch it out over that through the end of 2024. Replacing reserves, again, that offsetting revenue loss, they suggested is a high priority. And that's really about making sure that we rebuild our financial stability and restore our fiscal resiliency sort of in the long term, making sure that we we have those reserves. The the next one, considering regional initiatives, just making sure that we're aware of what other folks nearby are doing and and what the state is doing, making sure that we, where possible, leverage multiple funding sources. And then the last one, and this is, you know, their wording verbatim, is really about just being thoughtful and prudent, as they say, about how planning, how we're going to use the funding prior to committing resources. And I think that's really just about making sure that we're maximizing our impact in our community, making sure that, you know, we're we're making investments that help the community to recover from this pandemic and and help us to be more resilient for the next crisis. So next slide, and this is some some guidance from a different organization, the National League of Cities, which is a federal level advocacy on behalf of local governments. And this one is a little bit more focused around, I think, the strategy of how to prioritize how you use the the ARPA funding. The first one, I think, is really just making sure that we're looking both internally and externally to see where we we might spend the resources. Gathering your team is just identifying, you know, who's going to help lead the efforts. For those of you that may have been around for the American, let's see if I get this right, American Reinvestment and Recovery Act that was passed after the the Great Recession. At that time, it was really popular to have czars. There were, you know, people in charge were called the czar of whatever it was. So, you know, we had our RSR in Asheville. But I think this this time around, it'll be a team of folks dedicated to helping manage all this. Building connections again is is about making sure we're utilizing partners, especially other other organizations that are receiving funding. Soliciting input, you know, including opportunities for community sourced ideas. And then making racial equity a part of your plan, which is, you know, we always want to make sure that as we're making decisions, we're considering how the most vulnerable in our community are impacted and and trying to mitigate any unintended consequences of how we allocate resources. So we've used those two, those two things and a lot of other information we've gathered to kind of build. You can go on to the next slide. Some guiding principles for Asheville. And there's going to be a little bit of rehashing here, but so we've come up with these six. The first one, aligning with existing established priorities, including homelessness, public safety, advancing racial equity and sustainability. Using an equity lens, you know, prioritizing communities and businesses that face disproportionate harm, especially from this pandemic. Focusing on measurable impact to make sure that we can identify and measure our intended impact with this funding. Thinking holistically, again, leveraging collaboration opportunities and other funding resources. Investing in resilience, trying to balance that, you know, addressing current damage and investing in our our future resilience from from crises. And then considering the long term, trying to be cognizant about adding ongoing operational expenses because we know we're we're limited in being able to fund those types of things in the long term. So next slide, kind of looking ahead. Again, we're still awaiting that guidance from Treasury on the eligible uses. We're hoping that.
I'm sorry, Taylor, could we could we go back to the guiding principles? And I thought we were going to kind of pause here to see if council has any reactions to these principles and if there were any additional ones that they felt we needed, we need to consider.
You know, the this, it's kind of vague, but I think that's what we got, right? I mean, so we're, we're, we're just working with what we've, what we've got. So these principles make sense. I mean, I think it's basically saying, you know, don't radically stray from your course. You know, this isn't the time to do that, but to double down on on your priorities where the federal funding fits.
And so, Jim, we looked at a number of other, can you go back a couple of slides from these organizations who are kind of giving us guidance based on their professional perspective? And we took some of that guidance and said, okay, for Asheville, we think these are the most important ones for us to to look at as we have these conversations with with you all about how we should spend our our resources that will be allocated to us from this initiative. The the purpose of this was to, again, because unfortunately, we just don't have the guidebook, the blueprint for how this money can be spent. So we're having to have our conversations at a relatively high level. But we thought that we ought to establish some guardrails that as we looked at, you know, $27 million, but also looking at our needs, how would we prioritize investments? And this is essentially what we've come up with, particularly the one with aligning with priorities and obviously the the equity lens. And we really think considering the long term is some of the most important principles or criteria that we have. I think we have a couple of hands that we've got Kim and Gwen. And
Yep. Gwen, you can go ahead.
I think, Gwen, she's deferring to you.
The only, I think this is a good, good list. The only thing I would say is I would probably add to focus on partnerships, both, I mean, you know, county, certainly. The NPO comes to mind, the new, the new youth network to really, and I think someone else, you know, whoever those other groups that you looked at, you know, suggested that. And I would just say, I would add it to Asheville's guiding principles, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of in in line with my thinking, but I was also surprised to hear that we might consider this as staying the course because business as usual is how we got in so many of these disparities that created crises. And so many deeper inequities. So I wonder if instead of using an equity lens, we might invite accountability for equitable outcomes. And that would go in hand with partnerships because we don't have to go this recovery alone.
Well, that, you know, when I say stay the course, I mean, we just had a retreat where we talked about focusing these dollars on those experiencing homelessness. We, you know, we mentioned transit. We mentioned several things. So when I say stay the course, I'm talking about the course we just set last week. Not, not like the 20 year ago course. So I'm very eager to see us leverage partnerships with these funds. I know a lot of us have met, for example, with Homeward Bound and looking at the acquisition of the Days Inn on Tunnel Road to serve, had to bring online another 85 rooms to house those experiencing homelessness with disabilities. You know, I met with HelpMate today, and I know you all have met with Help, some of you have already met with them and their project to serve those experiencing domestic violence and and becoming homeless due to that. And their new facility, I believe, they said something, well, house up to 45, have up to 45 units. So there's some incredible opportunities here to partner with those in the community serving those most need and those most affected by this pandemic. So you know, we're not spelling that out specifically here. I know we're keeping this kind of broad, but but for me, those are going to be some priorities, some opportunities to look, to look. And I, and I think, you know, that's in keeping with where we've been headed and what what we've determined are our priorities. So.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you for mentioning the the expanded emergency shelter vision by HelpMate. We were talking about focusing on measurable impacts. I think that that gives us a double impact. Not only does it stay off homelessness for women and children, but it also, in fact, impacts childhood poverty and hunger as well.
Sandra? Ms. Tickle?
Yes. Well, one of the things I that I was concerned about that we did not discuss during our retreat, which I thought of later, is if when we have all the funds set up for to assist with the homeless, the people that are being evicted and things of that nature. I just wondered if we could set something up that actually addresses of being proactive to help those homeowners that may be on the verge of losing their homes or whatever in some type of assistance to them because those are people in the community that have sort of been riding the storm and holding on. And they may just be, you know, and it, and I was just wondering if we could do something to help those people to keep from, you know, like I said, increasing the homeless population. And so that was one of the things I felt that we really need to address is residents that may be in need that will, you know, instave all devastation for the family.
Yeah, and I think that that can fit very easily with investing in resiliency, which is about neighborhood stability and stabilizing. Your example was from a homeownership perspective. It could be aligned with a number of these, considering the long term. So, yeah, I appreciate those those comments. Ms. Whistler, your your hand is still raised. I didn't know if you had another question or. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Deborah, I know, and I, I know you have your weekly meeting with the county manager. And so I'm, I'm, I know you'll coordinate all of this, but Sandra's comment made me think of something. I was talking to the chair of the County Commission, and he mentioned they have $7 million, I believe is how much he said in terms of housing assistance. So I'd be interested to see, you know, how much funding we get for certain things versus how much funding they get for certain things and how, you know, not to, you know, maybe there are things that would be better suited for us to do and better things for them to do or that they specifically have funds to do. I don't know what those are, but Sandra's comment just made me think of that remark that he made. And one other, one other thing, I was able to participate in one seminar from the administration about about the relief package. And one of the things they mentioned was the the relief that's going to be provided or is being provided to individuals through tax credit refunds. Even for those who don't earn an income, they can receive up to $300 a month per child in their home. And one of the things the administration emphasized was trying to coordinate a community education effort to help people realize all of the funds that are available to them and make sure that they're, they know how to do that, how to fill out the paperwork or whatever it is if they're not already already getting it. And that was another thing I mentioned to the chair of the of the County Commission. And so I don't know if if you get a chance when you're talking to Avril about that, I'm not sure what that would look like. I know that's not a service we normally provide. But if we could make sure someone's doing it and just in our coordinated efforts, or if we need to provide rec center space or, you know, I don't know, to be able to do that, that that would seem important because I think there, you know, there's a chance people out there might not fully be realizing the benefits they can receive this year.
I think you make an important point, Mayor, in terms of maybe adding another principle of, you know, coordinated information sharing. I think a principle ought to be that we should share as much information, not only with municipalities like a Buckham County and the communities within Buckham County, but also with individuals. And I think as Taylor moves on, he's going to get to kind of an ask for us to add maybe a FTE over hire so that we can begin to gather our team, particularly from a from a fund management perspective, we're just going to need more help. And unfortunately, the positions that we have frozen, none of those frozen positions would be able to absorb this level of work. But if there are any additional comments on this one, I'll turn it back over to Taylor for him to discuss.
I wanted clarity to what the mayor was speaking about. You're talking about direct payments that come from the child tax credit?
It, so the, so the, it offers up to $3,600 per child. Yes. And so, you know, it's, it's just. Yes. And so, you know, it's, it's just a matter of making sure everyone has fully, fully taken advantage of that. And it may, you know, Deborah, you mentioned in terms of the staffing capacity. One of the things I will say about this relief act, which is sort of interesting, is that it's also supposed to be a job creator. So if there are opportunities for us to, again, leverage partnerships, like, I don't know, with OnTrack or something.
Absolutely.
I was probably going to call you like right now. But, but, you know, if it's a matter of us taking some funding from this to, to get a group like OnTrack to provide this service in community, you know, that's kind of also part of the stimulus piece of this, of this funding. So I'd, I'd like to make sure we're, I mean, I don't think we're going to leave, leave any dollars in the bank to spend this money. But, you know, but we also, of course, want to be smart, strategic about it.
Absolutely right. We can think about, and I, I just don't want to just throw stuff at the guiding principles, you know, just for a long list. But I, but I do think that if these things are important, we need to think about it. And I certainly think creating jobs and having an economic impact is, is very important. And not just an economic impact, but an impact that adds to resiliency, that adds to the equity lens, for example, hiring minority and women on businesses. Those kinds of impacts is what I meant. Ms. Ronnie? So we don't do what we've been doing in the past. Continue.
Thank you. So during the retreat, we didn't have a lot of time to dig into it. And I know we're not going to get into the weeds necessarily today because we're going to take time to do this, right? But I had hoped that we could peel a layer of the onion back. Is this the right time to do it or is there time further on the presentation for some more details?
I, I will, I, I think I'm, I'm looking at Tony and Taylor and seeing if, if you all think this is an appropriate time.
Yeah, I would say if it relates to the, to the rescue plan, then absolutely.
You're muted, Kim.
Thank you. So I just have four with very specific examples, I hope. One is I definitely share a concern for permanently supportive cooperative housing and eviction protection. Examples of that have already been named, like Days Inn, but also Be Loved, Haywood Street, and Podair Emma. Number two is I'm looking at those overlaps in our plans and our long-term goals around resilient food systems and supply chain interruptions or interrupting supply chain interruptions. So that could look like partnering for community-led access focused on addressing food deserts, food insecurity, production support can look like community garden infrastructure, space for land or entrepreneurial or cooperative ownership. On the city end, we could look at land use, community center building space, water fees, and participatory budgeting. Number three, workforce development, accessibility, education, mentorship, diversion and reentry programming. And for me, this is specifically around not just addressing our economic instability, but moving from the emergency of instability to the gains that are needed to address our inequities, not just perpetuate them. So when it's like not business as usual, this might look like acting on shovel-ready sustainability projects with our partners, increasing transit access, advancing neighborhood plans in historically underfunded neighborhoods, and partnering with community initiatives like the YMI, who's already doing a lot of that overlapping work. And then fourth, community-led solutions to get to our goals so we can maximize our funds and our capacity. And I know, I appreciate Glenn's focus on partnership to especially address the social determinants of health because that's how we got into these overlapping emergencies and it's how we're going to get to a shared success. So my suggestion is we might consider looking at setting aside so that we make time instead of creating urgency throughout this process. Make time to consider setting aside a percentage of funds for targeted participatory budgeting and reparations if that's possible and can fall into the scope of this work. So we don't fall into the trap of urgency later and make time to listen and respond in a meaningful way. I'm happy to send like a more detailed list once I get that layered out. But that's what I'm hearing in the community we need to do. And we'll hear more of that as we hear back from the Walk the Walk campaign and the budget, you know, input sessions.
Thank you.
This is Sage. The only question I have is maybe if there's anybody could elaborate on what they, what we think resilience might be. I mean, it's broad term, but when I thought about it in our retreat, I was thinking about if another pandemic hit, would we be ready? So the resilience of keeping people in their houses and stuff that we've talked about so far, great, love it, all good. But is there a component here of steadying the ship if it happens again or any of that? I'm just curious if any thought has been put into that.
Yeah, I think the, the resilience that we were thinking of is exactly kind of to that point of, you know, how do we make sure that we're better able to respond to the next, you know, hopefully not pandemic, but the next disaster, the next crisis that we have. And I think that that's one of the things that, you know, we certainly have a lot of work to do to figure out. I think we have some, some things that we've identified already. But again, we want to kind of bring a lot of that and, and crowdsource some of those ideas as well to make sure that we're, you know, we're not just charging forward with an idea that we came up with, but that it's something that's embedded and, and that it, that it is actually going to increase and, and provide that resiliency that we're looking for.
And Sage, Sage, I would just also say that we, we, we learned a lot, I think, from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And I, I hate that it had to have been a learning process through a pandemic because it was, you know, it was, it was hard to manage to understand, you know, what the community's needs were. So for example, and, and Ms. Ronnie talks about this a lot, access to food. You know, we had to figure out, you know, do we change regulations in order to have food trucks deliver food? Or do we, you know, there are a lot of things that I think as a result of trying to build these resilient communities that we learned how to better utilize our public spaces. I mean, there were just a number of things that I think is related to resiliency. It's not just about climate resiliency. It's about how do we build communities in a way that provides access to services that when these kinds of emergency situations present themselves, that we are better equipped with existing infrastructure. And I think that's what this whole ARPA and the infrastructure legislation that will be coming is about. It's about building our communities and providing the services and the infrastructure that is needed to withstand or at least to do our best in terms of recovery when these types of things happen without having to, to almost reinvent ourselves. And luckily, there were some things that we did knew, but there were also some things that were in place, luckily, due to the nonprofits and, and just the willingness of city, county schools to work together to try to solve these problems.
Right. Ben, thank you. Well said. Because sometimes I just think, you know, if it were to happen again, are we going to, you know, is this task list ready? Hit the go button. We're here to solve and help. The only thing that is missing for me on this list, I appreciate any of the partnership, but perhaps a goal or principle around ongoing engagement or education of community or, it's the only thing I don't really see here. I think these are great, you know, way up here kind of goals. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Glenn, do you, do you have a question? Come in.
So I just probably have more of a process question. What, what are we envisioning as to the guidance? I mean, is it going to get any more in-depth than what we know right now? Or, and I guess I'd like to understand sort of the ramifications of what if we screw it up? I mean, you know, it's like our, you know, if we spend it on something wrong, which I know Brad will be all over it or whoever will be all over it. But, you, you know, I mean, what, what happens if we do mess it up? And, you know, what are we anticipating that guidance is, you know, how much, how much details are going to be? Because I, I just have a feeling, you know, even though twenty six million dollars sounds like a lot of money for us, you know, people are going to be lining up on this. And so I, I just would really like to, you know, sort of, as, as we progress, sort of see what's the guidance and how are we making sure that we're communicating that out into the community so that, you know, all the people that do get lined up, they can at least figure out whether they should be in the line or not.
Absolutely. And I, and I'll turn it over to Tony and, or, or Taylor. But I know for the, for the stimulus package under Obama, there were lots of rules that we had to play by. So much so that it, it was overwhelming, actually. I think a lot of communities just almost opted out of even participating. But I don't think that that's going to be the case for this one in terms of being overly prescriptive. I think I heard the mayor said that she had been in one of the kind of introductory tutorial sessions. And they had said that there will be a little bit of, you know, more flexibility and leniency. But I do think that we're going to get some, some guidelines that'll be relatively prescriptive, but hopefully.
And I would just add to that, the, the one thing they did say is that the reporting requirements were not going to be the typical federal grant reporting requirements. It would be much less onerous.
That's correct. Tony or Taylor?
Yeah, I just piggyback on that. I think what, what the mayor said and what Deborah said is, is correct. And obviously, this is, is new. It's a different type of stimulus package than we've had in the past. So I think we are expecting those guidelines to be a little less strenuous and a little less rigorous than perhaps they have been in the past. I think really at this point, that's kind of the twenty four thousand or maybe in this case, twenty six million dollar question is what are those going to look like? And we, we should know soon. I think the first payment as part of the plan is that sixty days is in early May, I believe. And I think we're expecting that the guidelines will come either right before or around the time we get that first pot of money from them. And so we'll, we'll definitely know a lot more than, I, I do think the, the areas where we might see kind of stricter guidelines will probably be around how we can use the revenue to offset lost revenue from the past. And I have seen a few things already that do indicate that there are going to be some fairly prescriptive and fairly strict guidelines around how they define lost revenue. And so there may, some of the opportunities in, in that area may not be as great as they are with some of the other areas that they've identified as, as, as potential uses.
So I don't know. I think Sage.
Well, Tony actually just answered one of my questions because I, I knew we had been talking about kind of replacing lost revenues. And I get a little nervous when we keep saying twenty six, and I think we don't have as much to work with here. Because it's, do we know any of the things we're going to need to catch up? Any kind of price tag around that? I know that we were talking about the young buses maybe or just general funding that we had to put out that wasn't planned. Do we know that number or range?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a number yet. And I think a lot of what we talked about and a lot of what we looked at was related to the enterprise funds that we talked about the last work session. So civic center, parking, transit, we would look to those. In, in the general plan, again, we're really going to have to await the guidance there. Some of the early stuff I've seen is that you, you're going to be comparing revenue to the, from the year before COVID to how you did the year of COVID. And so if that's the case, then we, we may not have some opportunities, for example, to claim lost sales tax revenue. Because even though we, sales tax revenue was down pretty significantly the last three months of last fiscal year, March, April, May a year ago, for the year, we were actually up in sales tax revenue. So we, we may not have an ability to claim loss. But again, a lot more guidance and we'll be looking to the, to the, to the rules around that to tell us what we can and can't claim.
So and maybe that's worth being on this list of, as if we're, this is what we're putting out as our guiding principles to the community. I would, you know, recognizing that we have some catch up to do perhaps. Thanks.
Thank you. Antoinette? And then I think Kathy wanted to speak. Antoinette?
Earlier, we mentioned partnerships and included in that nonprofits. I'm wondering if we know yet whether religious organizations are eligible for this funding as they were with the original PPP funding from the federal government about a year ago.
I, I, I don't know a response to that, but we will definitely check it out. Kathy has been researching this stuff as well, and I think she wanted to make a comment. So Kathy, I don't know if you know the response to this question, but we can touch your comments at this time.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I don't know the answer to Councilwoman Mosley's question. I did want to refer back, I think, to Councilmember Whistler's question around the accountability for the funding. I think when we talked about there being very, very little guidance and there being very little said at this point, I want to point out that, you know, there are several different sources of funding that we're, we're getting through different pipes. For example, the transit money is coming through FTA. And we know in that case, there will be the same guidance that we've had through the CARES Act money, which will require us to spend the money first and be reimbursed. So it depends on how the money is coming to us from the American Rescue Plan program as to the level of accountability. And we're tracking all of that to make sure that we meet the level of accountability from each of those pots of funding. I just wanted to interject that that's different based upon whether it's home funds, CDBG funds, FTA funds, and make that distinction. So thank you for letting me make that comment.
Yeah, and I think we've got to kind of figure out, Kathy, if all of those different sources equal up to the six, twenty six million? Or are they separate and apart from the twenty six million?
Yeah, at this point, we understand that they're separate, that the twenty six is the direct allocation and then there's other additional funds coming in. And I would ask Taylor or Tony to verify that, if you would.
Yeah, we, we're definitely checking into that. And just quickly to follow up on Councilmember Mosley's question, one thing we will have to keep in mind, there, there may be certain approved uses that the federal treasury, treasury allows, but they will also have to continue to operate within the authority that were granted by the state. But maybe some things that the treasury outlines as, as allowed uses that the state of North Carolina does not allow local governments to do. I think the, the best example of that right now is the broadband. Broadband, yeah. I mean, the broadband is clearly in the federal guidelines already. But at the local level in North Carolina, at least, given current legislation, local governments would not be allowed to use money for broadband. So we'll have to run everything we hear from the, from the treasury through our ability and our, our spending power here, here in North Carolina as well.
Okay, that prompts a question for me. Okay. Because I did read on April seventh, the Department of Treasury put out a statement saying that the funds can be used to replace lost revenue to prevent the cut of government services. But then it explicitly said that you can make investments in infrastructure around sewer, water, and broadband. So my question, I was going to say for the portion where we're discussing the water fee alignment, I was wondering if those investments from the recovery funds can help us forego water rate adjustments or water rate increases?
So Vice Mayor, I have been, I have been really trying to find that answer out because I, I, I'm so with you on this one. I'm hoping that we can utilize this funding to address that issue. But we, we haven't gotten confirmation, but it's definitely on our radar. It is definitely one of those that we want to see if we can, we can utilize this funding for. Because it's loss of revenue.
Yeah, because I think an early conversation we had around water, the state government kind of cut us off at, at that possibility. So when we're talking about approved uses from the federal government that's kind of vilched by the state, I'm kind of wondering if that opportunity to save people from a water rate increase is still a possibility. It'll be a blessing.
Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly. All right. If there are any more questions, I think Taylor, we'll go to you in terms of next steps.
I just want to add one more thing. This is Kim.
I just want to add one more thing. This is Kim. I think it's really important for us to be careful. And I'm, I'm going to try really hard for myself to not forget that we are still in the pandemic, that people are still sick and suffering and even losing their lives and their loved ones through this pandemic. So that's just something that's like really heavy on my mind. I just wanted to name.
Well said. Taylor?
If we could go on to the next slide, I, I think some of this will, uh, be a little bit relevant, or again, maybe a little bit of a repeat. Um, so yeah, looking at next steps, uh, with the rescue plan, uh, you know, we're still awaiting that guidance. Um, and you know, we're hoping that that's going to give us, you know, provide those limitations, that framework, um, so that we know kind of what the, what we can and can't do with this funding. Um, as mentioned, you know, we're definitely going to need some additional staff resources. I think, uh, the, the most pressing need is going to be kind of that oversight management, um, of the, of the funding. Um, but we may have other needs as well, likely will have other needs as well. Um, we're hoping to source ideas internally and externally for how this funding should be used from you all, as you have been doing, um, on the, but again, from, from department staff and from the community. And then, um, hope to kind of synthesize that and vet those ideas and, and bring that forward to you all for kind of a approval of more specific priorities, uh, spending priorities. And then, you know, we're hoping to start spending, um, as soon as we have a plan in place. But, but we do want to, you know, want to be prudent as the GFOA recommended and, and make sure that we do have that plan before we, before we start spending. Uh, and I think the next slide is a question slide. If anyone has any more questions, um, we'll stop for a minute, but otherwise we'll kind of transition. Um, and I'll give a very quick overview of our capital improvement program. And seeing none, we'll move on to the next, next slide. So yeah, so we're just going to kind of, again, quick overview of what type of spending we include in our capital plans, some history on capital, and how we're prioritizing projects in the current, current process. So kind of really high level, uh, what is a capital asset? It's, uh, land, it's buildings and improvements to buildings, roofs, uh, HVAC systems, things like that. Uh, it's infrastructure and that includes, uh, infrastructure, you know, networks where, that you can see like streets and sidewalks and those that you can't, uh, like water and stormwater. And then finally, equipment and machinery. And that could be anything from computers to public safety radios to, uh, vehicles. So that's kind of what, what we're, what we're spending our money on in the capital program. Next slide. So why we separate that from our, from our operating, uh, spending? First is that project based, you know, these are one-time projects and not ongoing programs and services like most of what is in our operating budget. Um, the second is the scale of investment, uh, just by the nature of what it is, building a road or building a building is very expensive. So we kind of isolate those, those costs. Uh, the longer time horizon is those things also frequently take a long time to kind of develop. When you start from planning to design through construction, um, it's a, it's a lo- longer time horizon and their use typically is over a longer time horizon as well. And then lastly, unlike operating, uh, we use primarily utilize debt to fund our capital. Again, that gets back to the, the cost and the, the time horizon of, of the use of those assets. So, uh, that was really quick, but any kind of high level questions before I go on? Uh, this, yeah, you can go ahead to the next slide. So this is a sort of a historic and a little bit of projected, uh, capital spending. This information's a little bit dated, but the intent here is to kind of show that, um, we have done a really good job of increasing our capital spending in the last several years. Uh, that started with, uh, property tax, you know, that was dedicated to capital and FY14. That kind of started off our, our debt program and then continued with the geo bond referendum in 2016. But as you can see from, you know, going back to 1994, um, we're, you know, and, and before that, we are really catching up from years of deferred maintenance. And, um, you can kind of also see that we, we will start to, uh, tail off spending, um, pretty dramatically again, as we spin through, um, primarily those bond projects and, um, you know, significant project, uh, RAD tip, that's, that's pretty close to wrapped up now. Um, so we're going to be really limited with what we are able to accomplish moving forward without some additional resources. Next slide. Uh, so, uh, just a brief touch on kind of where projects are located. Um, you know, we try to make sure that both our regular capital investments and the, uh, geo bond projects have occurred throughout the ci- the city, uh, and our plan throughout the city. I think this, we're hopefully reflects that, that truth. Moving on to the next slide. And then looking at kind of how, how we're prioritizing our, uh, and planning for our future investments. Looking into the future, we've identified significant needs. And, um, I think those of you that maybe have been on council for a little whiles may remember a $300 million number from several years ago, or a $600 million, million dollar number, you know, as time goes on, we continue to identify more projects and that number just continues to, to get bigger and bigger. And, you know, what we are trying to do with our process is, um, you know, we know that, uh, we're unlikely to ever have, uh, $700 million to spend to address all of these needs. Um, so it's really about trying to prioritize, you know, some tough decisions and, and what projects do and don't get funded. So what we're working, working through is trying to develop a really clear decision-making criteria in part so that we can better communicate how decisions are made. Uh, we have a lot of technical information, um, be that pavement condition or facility maintenance needs. And we want to show how we've combined that information with some community needs. And, um, I'll use, uh, parks, Parks and Recreation actually has a really, a great tool that they've developed, um, an assessment that includes some service area data, like percentage youth population, population density, household income, racial makeup. And they kind of combine that with some, some of that other technical information, um, condition assessment of assets and past capital spending. And they bring all of that together, uh, to kind of, to decide on where they're going to make their capital investments. And we really want to create a similar structure to that, um, you know, across all of our, our, our entire capital program. And we've been having those conversations, uh, through this year's budget process, and they will likely continue, uh, on past this year's budget process. Another thing we're trying to do is extend our planning horizon. You know, we, we typically do a five-year capital improvement, uh, plan, uh, but we're really trying to push that out a little bit so that we have a better end projects this year. Um, but it, it is not a significant amount of additional capacity. We didn't add any new projects in the, in the current fiscal year budget, um, just as a, as a reminder. And then, and that as we do more neighborhood level community engagement, that we can use that criteria and that prioritization to, to talk about, uh, how we've looked at projects and, and again, have that conversation at that neighborhood level, um, of capital investments. And then, um, lastly, you know, we're, we're looking for, always looking for funding opportunities to help address our needs. Uh, we're hoping to see federal infrastructure funding get approved, um, you know, sooner rather than later. Um, again, obviously that would, that would really help us out. Um, but kind of depends on what happens in Congress. So with that, I think that is, uh, the last slide that we have on capital. So any questions on that? And I think if there aren't any, then I'll hand it back over to, to Tony to wrap up.
All right. Well, thanks, Taylor. And we do just have a couple of slides to wrap up. Again, just to kind of go back to those key takeaways we talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Um, uh, we highlighted the fact that staff is continuing to work to link the ongoing community engagement to the internal budget, budget work that we're doing. Uh, we're really quickly approaching kind of the end of the, the budget process, or at least the, kind of the internal part where we developed the manager's recommended budget. We're really about six weeks away from that. So, uh, the pace of work and the decision-making around the budget is really going to pick up in the next little bit. Uh, and we want to make sure we still to, still work to engage the community and get, um, their feedback as we work through these final few steps of the process. We also talked, uh, about the general fund and kind of a, a snapshot or a projection, if you will, where we think we're going to be next year in terms of revenue growth and some of the cost increases that we're looking at, um, for next year's budget. Um, talked about the ARPA program, the rescue plan, uh, a lot of discussion obviously around that and a lot more information to come. That'll be something that's high on the agenda and something we continue to talk to you all about, um, you know, for, for the, for the next several months and for the next several years for sure. And then lastly, uh, Taylor did a great job, I think of kind of summarizing where we're at with the capital program. We still, still have some significant needs. Uh, we've done, uh, a, a, a better job of addressing those needs the last few years. As he, as he mentioned, the geo bond, uh, from 2016 as, as well as the additional resources that went into the CIP program back in 2014 have allowed us to do a lot of, uh, exciting capital projects over the last few years. But to kind of keep that momentum going forward, we're definitely going to require some additional resources and hopefully some of the federal infrastructure dollars. Uh, hopefully that, that bill will be passed at some point and we'll see, see some of those dollars flow down to us at the local government level. So the next slide. So again, just some of the key upcoming dates. And I think we actually left the budget adoption, or I'm sorry, the budget presentation off of this slide. Uh, but we'll be talking next week to the finance and HR committee about the fee recommendations. We'll come back to you all with, uh, our final budget work session on April 27th. And then come to you all with the fee adjustments, uh, for potential adoption on May 11th. And then, like I said, the manager's recommended budget will be, uh, presented on May 25th. And then finally, we just wanted to remind the community on the next slide of the upcoming external equity focused budget sessions. Those start a week from today as well on April 20th. So we have three sessions on April 20th, 22nd, and 23rd. So hopefully we, a lot of folks will come out and participate in those. And I think that is it. So happy to answer any questions, any additional questions you all may have. Um, and thank you all for your time this afternoon. Thank you, Taylor, for tag teaming this one with me.
I think Ms. Ronnie has a question?
Um, I've seen a lot of budget presentations, Tony. Well done. Um, thank you so much. And I would like to just name that I don't know if any of our boards and commissions have seen any budget presentation whatsoever, if we're fielding advice from our, you know, over a hundred advisors. Um, but this feels like such an important time to use one of our most valuable assets, which is our volunteers that advise on boards and commissions. It's a fantastic way to get public input. Um, and I am a little bit concerned about this timeline, um, because we will still have the budget input sessions. But then after the budget input session, there's such a small window, um, where changes can be made. Um, so if we're really going to be meaningfully listening to people about what equitable distributions of funds look like and equitable outcomes, um, around these issues, we really definitely, it seems like we are missing an opportunity to engage. So maybe I should ask as a question. Is it possible for some of our boards and commissions to start seeing budget presentations and giving input?
Uh, we will take that under advisement. We'll go back and huddle up and s- see what we can do.
Well, I think, okay. Um, this is one of these, ju- just a process issue for one council member to direct s- city staff to do something. We, we get into a problem because the staff needs the full council direction. I guess what I'm, what I'm processing in my mind, Kim, when you talk is what are we talking about? How many boards and commissions? How many staff are involved in the presentations? Is it just like tailored to that board? So if it's transit, it's just transit related expenses? Is it, you know, so that, there's a lot of, um, I mean, it's not, obviously not an impossible task by any means whatsoever. I, it just, I'm, it's just kind of, um, not clearly defined in enough that I could say what it is that's on the table.
I'm, I can only speak for the boards that I'm the liaison to, but I know there are multiple, um, groups that are requesting to have presentations, Urban Forestry Commission, the Transit Committee, um, hasn't been meeting regularly, but will be soon meeting. So I imagine they might have some input. Um, so I can't speak to which ones, but if we are making significant changes, which in this case regarding, for example, capital, we're not making significant changes this year. Um, but where we are having changes or, um, where we have core city services, it would be a good start.
You know, I wonder if a way to manage it is to invite the boards and commission members to, to, um, to each of these budget work sessions. You know, I mean, they can be sent a notice and, um, so that they don't, so that they're on their calendar. And if they wish to tune into one of, one or all of them, they can. And then we can put out a request to solicit feedback, if any. I'm just trying to think of a way where staff isn't having to make these presentations over and over again. Or the, the other confusing thing that can happen is they get a different presentation than we did, and then we're not all on the same page in terms of, um, uh, discussing it. So that's just some thoughts I have, but.
If there's not going to be a presentation, is there a way that we can get creative with in soliciting input that maybe isn't already in our presentation? Um, it could be something as simple as I'm just spitballing here, like an email that goes out to all of our board and commission chairs, asking if there's any input on operations or CIP budget?
That's kind of what I was going to say that, um, I guess the boards that I was, I'm a liaison to, we did say, we did go out to them and ask, you know, what is your, what's this board's recommendations for this next budget cycle and this next year? And can you get them to us before the retreat? And I did hear some of those from the couple I'm on. So, you know, maybe Kim's point is good. We could come back, circle back and say about the specific thing. Do you have any input?
Gwen, you have your hand up. Can you?
Yeah. Um, so I, I, I think it's, it's a little difficult unless, um, you know, since we don't really have a proposed budget yet, um, exactly, you know, what is it the boards and commissions are going to weigh in on? Um, and, but so that's sort of a standard, you know, problem, I guess. Um, uh, you know, I mean, unless, unless Tony and Taylor, you have some, you know, for various, uh, for, for various departments, you've got a proposed budget that you know probably really won't change. I guess it puts, it's, I'm, I'm not real clear like what we would be asking the boards and commissions to tell us, other than spend more money in their particular area, which is what we're going to hear. Um, uh, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, I, I don't want to ask a question that we're going to basically say, well, that's, that's great, but, um, I mean, it just seems to me that they should be working off of a proposed budget to give feedback as opposed to just, uh, or, or get involved with the process that's going on right now with the public input.
Sage?
Um, I'm just remembering from previous years that we did have a little bit of presentations at some boards that were basically what we did today. Um, and maybe, you know, we, it can be sent to them. But we did, I remember having Taylor last year talking about this and how general fund works and how, what our basic revenues are and what our largest ones are. Kim, if your point is like, you know, getting input on what they, we should do with the budget, that's different. But are you, is that more the detail you're looking at? Or are you thinking like just the process in general?
Well, I am concerned about the process in general because, um, in the past, we have had much earlier in the fiscal cycle, a, um, at least a draft, like base budget, presentation at minimum. Um, and then I can't speak for all the boards and commissions and all the advisors who are waiting to be asked. Um, but I know one that seems like it comes up a lot is, um, support for urban forestry. Um, we haven't heard that request maybe because we haven't made space or asked.
Well, uh, this is what it looks like when you try to make sausage on the fly. I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we, what, what, since we don't have time to, to flesh all this out right here, what, what we can do to try to consider this. Um, and I'm, I'm, I don't know about you, Deborah, but I'm seeing some messages from Dawa. So I wonder if city staff has some ideas that you guys could, um, put your heads together and, um, maybe come back to us, uh, about, you know, sometimes I find that. and maybe come back to us about, you know, sometimes I find that when I get out of these meetings, someone says, we already have, you know, whatever system. You didn't know it and you didn't even talk about it in the meeting. So I, I just, I'm wondering if we can give staff a chance to take a look at how to make sure those boards that want to weigh in on the budget process have an opportunity to do that. I do, you know, it's always, anyway, I, I would just suggest we do that.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be more than happy to, to go back and put our heads together and see if we can come up with something. But what, what I do want, want to say is that I hope you all remember that this has not been a common or usual budget cycle for staff. We just got a budget adopted in September for this fiscal year and then immediately started on developing a new budget. So I would suggest to you that we certainly maybe have not done everything that we may have done in the past, in the way that we've done it in the past. We've tried to supplement with community input sessions, continuing with the reimagining. But we will definitely go back, take a look at what we can do for some type of dialogue or interaction with boards and commissions. But ironically, and you all can, can say I'm a liar or not, but we actually had this staff conversation about two days ago. Is how do we engage or should we engage? Do we have enough time and resources to engage boards and commissions? We literally had that conversation about two budget discussions ago. So yeah, it, it will be a challenge. I will be honest with you. But we will try to provide access at least to information, if not formal, you know, staff presentations and try to solicit some way to get input. But we'll come back with more detail. Mayor, if you can give us, we could potentially have a response in a, in a week or so, if that, if that's okay, because I, I'd love for us to, to really give this serious consideration. And I want to give it the time.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And Deborah, if I may, you know, as a liaison to, well, I don't, I don't mind just putting this in the real house of ideas if as the liaison at our meeting, I share the presentation and then try to answer questions. You know, I know staffing is hard, but just a thought to put out there as you all brainstorm. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Gwen, I don't know if you had anything else.
I just wanted to congratulate Tony again on his new role.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for doing it. We really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you all. Great what?
And great job today.
Oh, well, thank you. I've gotten feedback that I need to get the wall painted.
Yeah, he said, great time. That too.
Thank you all for your attention. We've got about an hour, well, maybe 55 minutes before our next get together. So thank you all. I know these, these are tough. These are tough days when we have to have so many meetings back to back. But we really appreciate your attention and great questions. We appreciate it.
All right. We'll see you back here at 5 o'clock.
Got it.